...agreeing to be here tonight. And then my questions and answer your questions. Malama Opuna has been doing these candidate forums for years and years and years. And because we're an environmental nonprofit, the only way we can do this is if we concentrate on environmental issues. So we always start off the forum with us asking the questions, and they're always environmental questions. Jen, please come up here, we're starting. After we've done that, then we open it up to the floor. You do not have to limit your questions to environmental questions. You could ask anything you want. This is the way it's going to work. We're going to start out with opening statements from each of the candidates. We're starting from the far end alphabetically. And each candidate will have three minutes. The lady up front here, wave your arm, is the timekeeper. So candidates, keep your eye on her because she will start waving her arms and jumping up and down or whatever, to let you know that your time is up. We're going to rotate the questions. So although the first question will be, the opening statements will be there, but then Maddie Green will answer the first question. We're first person to answer the first question, and we'll go around. And then Eileen O'Hara will be the first person to answer the second. No, no, we're starting with the, okay, and then we go around, and we rotate. Okay, do we have that, or are we clear about that?
Yes.
Everybody will have an opportunity to be first, middle, and last, with all the benefits and detriments that the position holds. So we're going to start off right now with our first candidate. And you've got the mic? Make sure your mic is turned on. And it is, okay, let's go for it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha, and thank you all for showing up on a very warm summer evening. I appreciate that. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, my top two issues, and I'm looking forward to your questions. How's that? Can you hear me in the back?
Only if you use the mic.
On the first day of my classes at Hawaii Community College, I asked all of my students to consider three things in all of their oral presentation. And I teach speech communication. Culture, values, and beliefs. And I ask for respect for all of those three issues. And I have to say, they've been wonderful in adhering to them. And I'd like to bring the same values to the county council. I started volunteering at the age of 18 when I was attending community college myself. I worked at the parent's school for autistic children. And then when I transferred to a four-year school, I started a Big Brother program for special needs program, which was the first in the state. And that probably convinced me that I wanted to stay in special ed and become a special ed teacher. And that's what I did. I did that for 10 years. And after that, I worked as an administrator in a substance abuse clinic for three years. Then, when I completed my doctoral degree, I moved into the business field because I was getting a minor in business administration. I've also volunteered at Harvard Community Health, Asian Pacific Island Wellness Center, Native American Youth and Guidance Center, Ronald McDonald House. And when I followed my children here, I volunteered for SCORE, which is the counselors to American small businesses. And I've been a member of HPP, Neighborhood Welfare. I switched over to business after completing my doctoral degree. I joined a company with 36 employees. We became 2,700 employees over the course of nine years. And we had a very good run. We might not think of Hawaii County as a business, but it is. With a budget of approaching half a billion dollars and over 2,700 employees, it's a business. It's a people business. But it should be run and managed in a very transparent way as a business. And those are one of the top issues that I'd like to focus on. Transparency in our government and our infrastructure. I'd like to bring my business skills in budget and management to the county council and apply those skills so that Puna gets value for the money that we put in to the county and the services and money that the county puts back to the community. As the fastest-growing district on the island, isn't it time that Puna's infrastructure matches We shouldn't have to leave Puna to go to the doctor. We shouldn't have to leave to go to the dentist, to go to work, to get higher education. We shouldn't have to leave Puna to start a small business. I'd like to say, stay in Puna. We need 2016 infrastructures and small businesses, so small businesses can develop and thrive and hire our graduates. Thank you very much.
Aloha to all of you. Thank you for coming and your interest in our community. My name is Maddie Green. I'm a recently retired Pohor business owner and a candidate for county council District Four. Mahalo Nui to Renee Sirakusa and Malama Opuna for hosting this forum. My family's tradition of public service in Puna District runs deep, beginning with my great-grandfather, John Kepa Okaku Kamoha Alii Puni, who served as the first sheriff of Puna back in the 1800s. Over the past 20 years, I've worked to continue that tradition as a volunteer at the grassroots level. During that time, I've served as an officer and board member of Main Street Pohor Association, on the Pohor Regional Town Center Steering Committee, and the Puna Community Development Implementation Action Team. As a founding member of the Pohor Streets Booster Club, as an officer of the Non-Avalley Community Association, as an officer and board member of the Pohor Weed and Seed Program, and later as an officer and board member of Kokoa Pohor, which is a graduated weed and seed site. On the border of Kanaka Opuna, in Hawaii Island through Basket Drug Coalition and Apuna Watch, I've been both humbled and honored by recognition for that service as an honorary kapuna for the Pohor Weed for the Benapa. In 2008, I awarded the State Attorney General Commendation for my work with Weed and Seed. In 2009, I was selected for the Hawaii County Women's Hall of Fame. In 2010, a recipient of the Hawaii County Achievement Award. I believe our island and Puna District hold a potential for a bright and prosperous future, but we face many ongoing challenges. Puna District now has a population larger than Hilo's and is projected to continue growing faster than any other district on Hawaii Island. Forty percent of Puna's residents live in poverty as defined by federal standards. With rapid population residents, growth and poverty come infrastructure and service needs that are better addressed sooner than later. Among the many issues facing our community are homelessness, lack of adequate multimodal means of transportation, ongoing sustainability, emergency evacuation routes in an area, subject to lava flows, earthquakes, hurricanes, and flooding. A few other issues of concern to residents include GMO labeling, geothermal emissions, preservation of agricultural lands. I've often said I do not have a flatworm, but rather a diving board. If elected, I promise I will dive in and continue working very hard with and for you. Thank you very much.
Aloha. I'm Eileen O'Hara, and I have lived in Puna for 35 years. I'm running for county council, District Four, and I really appreciate Malama Opuna for hosting this event. After attending both the universities of Hawaii at Hilo and Manoa for graduate school, I applied my degrees in environmental economics to work in our community. I worked at Helco for five years as a solar electric specialist and five years at the county. First, as a planner, and then in '03, I became the recycling coordinator and designed the recycling system that we currently have and implemented the High Five program. I've also worked as a contract manager for the state hospital system and served as business specialist for the Big Island Bio-Gelplant in Shipman Industrial Park. I've been faculty at UH Hilo since '97 and most recently teaching there full-time, both in the College of Business and in the College of Agriculture. My success as a grant writer has brought in millions to fund community programs. At the community level, I've served on the governor's environmental council for four years and was appointed to the 2010 Cost of Government Commission at the county. I've been president of Hawaii Insurance Community Association the last five years, giving up my position in April to run for council. We achieved many of our subdivision goals while I was president. We installed a solar-powered pumping system for our community-sized swimming pool, created a new ocean park, renovated our community center, and obtained a $2 million USDA grant loan combo to repair our aging water system. And the reason I want to be your council member has to do with my experience as president of my subdivision while recovering from Hurricane Isla in 2014 and also preparing for potential lava inundation. Lower Puna needs a councilperson who can lead, who already has political and agency contacts at the local, state, and federal levels. It was difficult to stand by why many voters in Lower Puna lost their right to vote in August 2014 primary election due to the hurricane impacts, with effective representation at the local level that should not have happened. As I talk to voters, I hear issues that people consider important, and two rise to the top. The first is a lack of alternative road access into Lower Puna for times when Highway 140 is closed, as well as the issue of homeowner associations paying to maintain private roadways open to the public. I've worked on these issues in the past, and I feel I can successfully champion a solution at the council. People also ask for better police response. We need additional officers for our district. So in that, I would like to humbly ask for your support in the primary election on August 13th. Mahalo.
So aloha. Thank you for coming and taking the time of your very valuable schedules. It's really nice to see that we have drawn a power, because I know we have our mayor candidate forum also occurring in the same meeting. But let me get into a little bit about myself, and then maybe a few of the priorities that I would like to accomplish or continue working on as we move into the next session. I'm born on Hawaii Island, born in Maui, all with my sister, my mom, my wife, and my cousin, who came away for Maui. But I moved there when I was about seven years old. Went to school here locally, graduated from New High School, also graduated from UH Hilo, bachelor's degree in political science. I started working when I was young. I started working when I was 14 and a half years old, because my dad, my mom, my mom later retired as a state nurse in the department. I later went on to work as a corrections officer for the Department of Public Safety, serving 12 years there, joined it immensely, moved on, and worked on, worked for the United Public Workers, who represents those individuals along the unit, nurses. And I also represented Unit One employees, who worked within the state and the company. I see a fellow retiree who's out there who's also worked for HDA. But I moved to Germany back in '76, met my wonderful wife. I was working for Trader Mix and I was opening restaurants for them. So I do have both, I think, balance of the public and private sector. Established my own business here, which I've kind of put on the side for now, so in Hawaiian acres, it's all legal, special to me, or at pay my taxes, TA, and, oh, don't even go on TA, because, you know, some of you know how you feel about the state and part TA. To get to some of the issues, you know, we've accomplished much in terms of collectivity, especially up in the Upper Puna area. South Kupua Road, Laoko, South Laoko, and South Kulani. Wish I could explain more on what my plan is. Please visit my website, dannypelika.org. If you have any questions, please give me a call, email me, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. I look forward to seeing you. And I'll again for coming. Aloha.
Before Jen answers the question, there's some people who came late, they're standing around, there are some seats up front here. Now is a good time for you to take some seats without disturbing the proceedings if you want to sit down. Unless you want to stay there and hold up the wall. Okay, all right, we're going to continue then. Jen?
Thank you. Aloha, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. My name is Jen Ruggles, and I was born and raised on the Big Island. My mother grew up in Kahului. She worked for the Department of Education as a teacher, tough job. My father moved here in the '70s as a mason, and my grandfather built one of the first restaurants in Kahului, Shocker Restaurant. I was born and raised here, in the district. I understand the district and I understand our issues. A lot of people ask me why I'm running. I'm running because I have experience in passing bills at the state and county levels, and I've seen how that one swing vote on the council can either be for the people, for the environment, or for some private interest that's profiting off the current state of affairs or has some interest in profiting off the people that live here. And right now, this district is that swing vote. That's why I'm running. If you look at my campaign contributions, my average contribution is $70, 80% from the district versus 5% from the district and $420 average. This is looking at the last year's election season, the total reports. 5% versus 5% from the district, 66% of those contributions are from shipment. If you want to open railroad, if you want railroad to open, we need somebody who represents the interests of the people in that regard. Eighty percent of my contributions are from Puna. 95% on island versus 45% off island. I represent Puna. I'm from Puna, I'm for Puna. I've been going door to door, I've talked to thousands of people in our district. And our district is the fastest-growing district in the state. We're the poorest district in the state, and we have the most dangerous roads. We need to work extra hard to make sure our needs are being addressed out here, because right now, they're not. I will fight for you. I'm from Puna, I'm for Puna, and we have a lot of work to do here. Thank you so much for being here and for participating. It's people like you that make this community a good place to live and gives us hope out here. Thank you.
The question has been forwarded down to Maddie Green. This matter will answer our first question. Roadside spraying of weeds has been an issue for a long time. Many years ago, Carol Burgess did a study demonstration project that avoided spraying but kept the roadsides neat and attractive. It was a big success in terms of cost and appearance, but was never implemented as standard Department of Public Works policy. Public concern about herbicide overuse and abuse has increased since then. Are you willing to tackle this matter, and if so, how?
That's a good question. Yes, you're right. Yeah, to tackle this matter, I mean, I guess you have to, there are alternatives to Roundabout and other sprays. You don't have to use those that are, you know, bad for our environment.
Roundup.
Roundabout, yeah. I do want to say that bad word, okay. But there are alternatives to using our, instead of Roundabout. And how would I tackle it? Well, like a football player. Just tackle it down. No, seriously, I would have to gather all my information first and try to get, you know, something that you can get a bill running or something to prevent stuff like that to happen. Thank you.
Three minutes for every question.
Okay. Three minutes is a long time to address that question.
You can do it in less.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, using herbicide sprays on the roadside has always been a controversial issue, and it's become more so as people have acquired information and long-term data on the impacts of these sprays that we're using, not only on the environment, but also on human health. And alternatives do exist, and as Renee just pointed out, a study was done that showed that this activity of combating roadside weeds could be done through mechanical means and other types of sprays that are not toxic and done cost-effectively. Well, therein lies the answer, cost-effectively. This is a budget question, and I am unfortunately an economist, I know that's not a real popular word, but it's easy to make the argument that if it's most cost-effective to do it in that manner, that's the way it should be done. Making this happen, though, at the county, I have been a county employee, I worked in solid ways for a number of years, so I do know how difficult it is to change behavior within the county. And I was very successful at doing that when I was at the county. They wouldn't recycle when I first entered the county. They wouldn't recycle even paper. They had a basement full of old Wang computers from the '80s, taking up valuable real estate. And I showed them ways that they could recycle, and they finally bought into it, and once it happened, oh, it was like a flood. So it's a matter of changing behavior, and I've worked on this one before within the county, and I'm sure that I can help do this as a councilperson. But the answer to the question is that there are cost-effective alternatives out there, so we do not need to be doing that. Simple as that. Thank you.
Renee, where are you? I was going to ask you to repeat the question. No, I'm kidding. So we're talking about spraying and alternatives. I'll tell you. So I'm happy to say that the Department of Public Works instituted a trial with Avenger. The initial results were not promising. When I looked at how the results of them sprayed with the Avenger, now, I wasn't there when they sprayed. I didn't know if they were using the correct amounts or... You can't hear me in the back? Now you can. Is that Sarah? Hi, Sarah, how are you? That's nice, all right. Glad you came. All right, so can you hear me now? So we have instituted pilot project to try it out, and it wasn't, it didn't look that successful. There's other means. You can use steam. That equipment is very expensive, but you can do it. Another is mechanical means. That would be okay. I'm all for that because you've got to employ people that would actually do the weed eating. I'm game, but it costs money. That's a fact. Can I, please, I'm talking. Thank you, ma'am. So when you consider the alternatives, you have glyphosate, which a lot of people don't like to use, and hey, they have their reasons for not wanting to use Roundup or glyphosate. We can use steam, or we can use mechanical means, and we could also use other technologies for herbicides that do become available for the market. But it's about consideration. You have to consider all points of view when deciding what you want to do, what is the best course of action in the interest of all our people, not just one side or the other side. So to me, I will look at the results, compare which products, which methods, which to me and to the public, I think, serve us best, and I would rather go that way. Me, that's what we're here for, as councilperson, to deliberate, take into consideration all the facts, the data, empirical data. Thank you very much, and make the best decision thereon. Thank you.
The county of Hawaii is one of the biggest purchasers of Roundup in the state. And as representatives of our island and as of Puna, hundreds of people did come out in favor of the recent bill that would get the county to use an alternative to Roundup because Roundup is toxic, and the data shows it's toxic. We're spraying it directly in the waterways right now, which I believe is in direct violation of the label. And that is why the public showed up in numbers to support this alternative. There are alternatives, there's vinegar, there's salt, they're doing it all over the nation, they're doing it all over the world. There's a lot of alternatives out there that are cost-effective. We just have to do it, and we can do it. And doing even just a little bit of research, even if we just did a resolution for that, we would find that 70% of the Roundup that we use is not necessary. And like I said, this bill did go before this current council. This district was the swing vote for that bill, and it did not pass. Thank you.
A couple of weeks ago, I attended a brown bag lunch sponsored by the Kuikahui Mediation Center, and it was put on by Dr. Gregory Chun, and I want to read the title of the brown bag. Reflections on Community Advocacy and Intractability in Hawaii. We addressed the plastic bag issue a while back. We addressed the plastic bag issue a while back, and I heard it's going to close businesses, it's going to affect everyone, no one's going to bring their bags, yet we found that empirical data, people bring their bags to KTA when they go to KTA. And if they don't, they buy a bag. So we've addressed one issue. I believe that we can address this issue. I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that I know the answer, but I know we can address it. If we start thinking that one side is not always right, maybe we meet in the middle somewhere. We don't want to put anyone out of work, but we also don't want to expand our budget to hire more people to spray. That makes no sense. There are places on the mainland that have accomplished this feat very successfully. Why not study what they've done? And I'm not going to tell you that I've studied them, I haven't, but I'm willing to do that, and then look at how we can solve it here in the most cost-effective way. I don't really need three minutes. Thank you.
The third question, we'll start off with Eileen O'Hara answering that, and this is the question. The Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, known as ICEWAP, was passed by the council many years ago but never implemented. Always the little, tiny little bits and pieces here and there were, but as an entire plan, it was not. And our landfill's life has been extended several times over. It met a deadline and got extended, and hit a deadline again, was extended some more. You can't do that forever, and we know that. Its newest extension is almost at the end. What solutions do you suggest for handling our future waste?
Okay, great question. Just to bring us up to speed a bit, the landfill in Hilo is an unlined landfill. It was put in before the 1993 federal requirement to line landfill. And for those who are unaware of the fact that we have 120 to 140 inches of rain in Hilo on an annual basis, that rain goes through that garbage and it creates this noxious water called leachate. And right now, that leachate is just going into the ground because there is no liner. And that groundwater will eventually hit the oceans, and we know what that type of sewage water creates, algae blooms and other negative impacts along the shoreline. The landfill in Hilo is capped at a height of 200 feet above sea level. Right now, it is at 196 feet, and we have barely a year left. They have steepened the slopes, that was how we got one extension, filled in every dogleg, every little crevice that wasn't being used in that landfill area. But we cannot extend the height of the landfill because it is too close to the runways at the Hilo Airport, and the FAA is not going to move on that. It is 200 feet, that's it. So we have a very short time. I don't know if you're aware of it, but a plan was brought into place when I was with Solid Waste, which was to use a building known as the Sword Station at the Hilo landfill area, just past the transfer station in Hilo, to separate all recyclables and push the rest of the garbage up against a 10-foot concrete push wall, put it into trailers, and truck it to Puu Anahulu, which is our West Hawaii sanitary landfill, which could conceivably assume all of the waste for the island for the next 75 years. There's a lot of land space there, and it's being properly managed, unlike the Hilo landfill. So that was the plan then, in 2005, and it was objected to because people didn't want 10 to 12 garbage trucks running through Waimea, which was having a terrific traffic problem at the time at the stoplight. That was before the Daniel Inouye Highway was built. It is now there, and that can get us to Puu Anahulu much faster and more directly with the right trucks, which we don't currently have at the county. And so that's, that's something that needs to be rectified. But that is a plan that is already on the books and one that could go forward. It is not a zero-waste plan, but it implies that we will do a lot more resource recovery, which is recycling. Yay. Okay.
Environmental management, okay. You know, Eileen did a good job surveying the current situation we have with our landfill. We do have alternatives. Chalk over to the other side, or we could also burn incinerate, or we could continue compostables and try and reduce our waste, which I would prefer. To me, it's about creating an environment of working together for everyone. We all have to be a part of this solution. Where my wife is from, in Germany, the whole community, nation got behind it, educated each other, got involved. It became a purpose. It became a priority for them, and they all do it. For us, we have to do the same. It's hard to believe that when I see some videos popping up where people are throwing their Opa'ola on the side of the road. That's lacking. That's pilau to me. Pilau is not good. No, and it's dirty. So it really takes everyone's involvement to get this done, but I think everybody's on the same page in being more environmentally friendly. I think we all are. You know, as Hawaiians, it's part of my culture, it's the island, but we all work together. In Hawaiian days, when you had a fish pond, we were the most sustainable people that ever lived here on these islands. Remember that. Remember that. We used our Ahupoa system. It's not taught in a book to me. I live it. I've lived it. I've gone in the lois. Produce taro, clean the taro patches, it's hard work, but Hawaiians just do all come together to accomplish a goal, not divide, not one side against the other side. You work all together. That, to me, you have the best solution. So when you all decide on a common goal, we can all get them. Really good. Thank you.
All right, so waste management is one of the core functions of the county government. It's one of the main purposes of the government, of the county here. And in 2009, we passed the Zero Waste Implementation Plan, which isn't being talked about right now, and it directly relates to our waste situation. Our current situation in Hilo, where we don't have the liner, it's neighboring the second largest neighborhood of Hawaiians in the world, and all of that is leaking out. It's leaking out into Keokahua and into Hawaiian homeland. It's not acceptable. And right now, there's really not, there's not much that's being done about that. There's two things that this current administration did in complete disregard of the Zero Waste Implementation Plan. The first thing was they didn't pass the styrofoam ban. The styrofoam ban went hand in hand with the Zero Waste Implementation Plan in that it was a compostable dinnerware that would sync up for when our composting facility was established, and that would reduce a large amount of organic matter going into our landfill. The second thing was the RTP, I'm sorry, excuse me, RFP, Request for Proposal for the Incinerator. The incinerator was not in compliance with the Zero Waste Implementation Plan. I'm sure many of you know it produces toxic gases, and in fact, it would require us to make more waste. We wasted two years and tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to do this study that failed in the long run because it would be unprecedented to have a small, we would have to have the smallest incinerator in the county produce more rubbish than we're producing now, and then be fine if we didn't meet the rubbish requirement. It would be an ISO, it wouldn't create jobs. We have the opportunity to create a green-collar industry that views our waste as resource, like what Eileen was saying, resource recovery. It's a huge job market that isn't being tapped into, that would protect our environment, increase jobs, and just be for the people, because the current situation is not acceptable. Thank you.
This appears to be another case of kicking the trash down the road. And quite frankly, I don't see the point in putting trash on a truck, going over the mountain, using fuel, even if it's an efficient truck, and then dumping it to Kona. I don't see that as a solution. There are towns, one of them being Portland, Oregon, who's granted, they're not an island, but they've accomplished this in a very systematic and organized way. I think we can, this is another case, we can do this, but we have to come together to do it. And I would ask that in that process, when we think about the businesses that we affect by putting bans on, I'm not in favor of styrofoam, but I don't want to put anybody out of business until they can get into another business. That's not fair. Yes, we have to address this. We've been talking about this forever, but there have been places, Portland being one of them, that have done this successfully. I think we can do the same thing. Thank you.
I know 50 years ago, people used to burn their own rubbish, and all you had left was the cans. So we hardly have any rubbish in our transfer stations or whatever, or a dump, as they used to call it. Nowadays, we can't do that because of air pollution. I understand that. But I also feel that we could find a solution if people work together. Everybody wants to have their own agenda. Well, I can't do this because I'm going to lose money, or I can't do that because I'm going to lose my job. Why can't we compromise and work together as a family, like we used to do in the old days? Everybody worked together, like Danny said. And I still feel, a couple of years ago, Incinerator came to time, and nobody wanted it, and I can understand that. But I thought maybe building a small one with the purpose of enlarging it later when it's needed would have been the answer, but that's not the answer still. It's a matter of sitting down together and working out this solution piece by piece, even if it takes you weeks and weeks. I think that we should all work together. We're not working together right now. Thank you.
The next question. Danny, you're up on this one.
Thank you.
The county has more than 400 miles of roads in Limbo for which it has legal responsibility. Department of Public Works has made upgrading and maintenance of these roads a low priority, as we can all tell because none of them have been fixed or maintained. But in part, that's due to funding concerns. You know, we have to give them that. So where would you place this issue on your priority list, and how will you address this infrastructure problem?
I think I've done quite well in addressing this issue, but I've always been taught to be Mao, you don't toot your own horn, so it's kind of hard for me. Since my sister's here, she loves to do it, I'm going to try and act like her. Just kidding. We just appropriated $11 million for connectivity up in Apopona, and this goes to roads basically in Limbo, South Lako, South Kupua, Pacific Road. Now, these are initiatives that are intended to create better public access, not only in times of emergency, but also create 24/7 connection routes between the subdivisions that have not had, well, some of them, they're not public roads. But to be specific, the roads in Limbo, let me answer that question, and I want to make sure I answer the right question. So connectivity is tied to that in a way. Ola Aru, which does connect to, does connect to 40th Street, which we had some discussions yesterday in our connectivity ad hoc committee, which Gregory and I, and Miley David, and Freshel Miesche sit on, were attacking this issue. We realize, recognize how, I recognize how important this was from long ago. That's why I got Koali done, you know, getting that done. And roads, to me, they present not only a means of getting someplace, but it's like communication. You can travel in between places easier. If an accident occurs on Highway 11 or Highway 130 where we've had, we need those alternative routes to be available. Excuse me. Roads in Limbo. Inos Road is another thing that came up yesterday that I'm glad somebody brought up because that was on my back burning. I'm going to continue to work on down because that could go into Hawaiian Acres. Down here, we also have roads in Limbo that we can also address. In Lower Pona, we've got to come up with a plan for Hawaiian Paradise Park, and I have to say, I think I've worked very well with the homeowners associations, Hawaiian Fern Forest, Hawaiian Acres, Fern Acres, Orchid Land, and Hawaiian Paradise Park has also participated. And our Puna Community Development Plan Action Committee is responsible for the connectivity for our Puna section, where the model development plan, I think they're also tackling the issue on roads in Limbo, but the county has to come up with priorities of where they want to make those connections and improve the roads. And I think Puna District is really lucky because we have neighbors just on the Puna Community Development Plan also, and working well together with the PCDP and the homeowners associations, I think, gives me a big advantage because I've already developed these relationships. They trust me, they know I can get it done, and they know I work for their best interests. And we're going to make it happen. That's what it's all about, making it happen for the people. Time?
15.
15 seconds. Okay. So roads in Limbo, the money is put on the side every year in the budget for Department of Public Works, Highways Division, so they can work on certain roads within the operating budget. Now, the $11 million that we've appropriated is on top of that, that we will use to improve roads. Thank you very much.
When you live in Puna, you know the impact of poor roads on everyday life. The people in Puna are tired of having to constantly replace our vehicles and not have access to community, and not have access to emergency services like fire and police and ambulance. and ambulance. It's rough for us out there. I was born and raised here, Hawaiian Acres, Fern Acres, it's a big deal. I've been going door to door, I've talked to thousands of people. When I ask them, what's important to you? Roads, number one. Roads will be my number one priority if I'm elected. It was already proven that our district was discriminated against by the county and state in the most recent years when it comes to funding for roads in our district. So we need to make that more of a priority for our county government to take care of our roads. That will be a priority of mine if I'm elected, because I understand this is the number one issue for our district. Thank you.
The project list in this county's budget for Puna capital improvement has Puna Makai Alternate Route, the Puna CDP Road Project, Puni Emergency Access Road Improvements, and the Puna Connectivity Emergency Access Routes totaling approximately $13.1 million. No money appropriated. And when I asked how we were gonna pay for this, I was told, well, we'll just issue some bonds, which means we will pay for it, just not today. So I'd like to see priorities set. There's no doubt, I live in HPP, on a terrible road, I understand the issues, everybody's been dealing with them, and I understand about replacing cars because I had to do that once. It becomes a matter of life here. But let's set our priorities first, and then, how are we going to pay for it? And you decide how much you want and how much you can afford. And I keep hearing it's not going to affect us now, but it will next year, or the year after, or three years, with all of us have no plans to move. We want to stay here, we want this to be our home, but we want to be able to afford our home, and we want to be able to afford the taxes that we pay for our homes. So I would advise setting priorities, being very cautious about this, and providing full disclosure, who's gonna pay for it and when. Thank you.
I know all about roads because I live in Nanavali and we have some of the worst roads. But, you know, we're trying, we're trying to keep up with our roads by doing gravel and when we had a call, we'd go out and we'd fill the potholes and everything else, but we just don't have the funds. And you're right, who's gonna pay for it? You can't keep raising assessments to your membership, you know, in your some division because you need to fix roads. Is roads a priority really for me? Most of them don't want their roads fixed because they don't want people driving through and racing through, and that's what's happening in our roads that aren't, we don't want that. And I can understand that, but still, we need to have better roads for emergency vehicles. But we have alternative ways to get there without going over those bumpy roads. That's what we have right now. To me, the priority wouldn't be roads for me. It would be to feed my people. I am so into feeding our hungry people that roads would be second to me. Thank you.
And I want to thank Maddy for all the work she does with food, and she does a lot of good work here. And I think we've gone a little bit astray on the question, which was originally about roads in Limbo. And roads in Limbo, if you want to define it, is a little bit different than some of the roads we're talking about here. A lot of our subdivisions, mine included, in Hawaiian shores, has privately held roads. And the privately held roads that are unimproved happened in a manner that we would now call an environmental injustice. The subdivisions of Puna and even Ka'ul were developed with substandard infrastructure, and we've not, as homeowners, been able to rectify that. And to put that entirely on the shoulders of the homeowner is not acceptable. And I will say this, we underuse the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development Program, has money, you can borrow very low interest loans, homeowner associations are eligible to do this, and the terms are great, right now historically low interest rates, 40-year terms. And when you do a public-private partnership where the county comes in and assists the homeowner associations in acquiring money and ponies up a little bit of money to make it all happen, then we can start tackling those roads that people want to see improved. And Maddie's right, there are some roads and some locations where people do not want to see the improvements. So it really depends on what the people want. So as far as roads in Limbo, these are roads that have been abandoned by sugarcane companies or are in Limbo because the state has walked away from it and the county hasn't assumed it. And the truth of the matter is that terminology is no longer current because the county has pretty much accepted responsibility for all roads that the state is no longer utilizing. And therefore, we shouldn't be arguing over maintaining it. The reason we're still arguing over maintaining some of these roads in Limbo is because they are a gravel road. Our county code only allows for one standard for roadways, a dedicable road standard. And you know this one. And it doesn't provide for a less than 60-foot right-of-way, it doesn't provide for a gravel surface, and therefore, our Public Works basically has no guidelines on how to maintain these gravel roads, which were once roads in Limbo. That can be fixed. Again, this is about changing mindset and the way that we refer to it. Funding's out there, there are available grant monies, and I'd like to see more grant monies used at the County of Hawaii. Thank you very much.
We're getting some great answers here, aren't we? Okay, I have two more questions, and then we turn it over to you. San Francisco has just enacted the most stringent anti-styrofoam law in the nation, while our council has just refused to pass a much weaker and less comprehensive version. Do you support San Francisco's policy for our island, and if so, to what extent? Discuss.
I support banning styrofoam for food vending on the Big Island. It's a toxic food product. It leaches poison into the food, especially if it's hot and if it's being served with hot liquids. That's a consensus among the scientific community, it's not even up for debate anymore. The research shows it, it's proven. We had one lobbyist from the styrofoam industry come to our county council and convince them otherwise, which is absurd to me. It's poisoning over 500 species of fish and wildlife. It's toxic. We had an opportunity to take it out of our food system and out of our environment in compliance with our Zero Waste Implementation Plan, which is the charter, it's county code that the county council is obligated to follow. They didn't follow that on this issue. And again, this district was a swing vote for that issue. Thank you.
Having lived in San Francisco for approximately 19 years, I can say a few things about it. It has the highest cost of real estate in the country, higher than New York, which means it takes in more real estate taxes than any place in the United States. So they had the means to implement this law by helping the businesses to transition. They didn't do it, they're not doing it on next week, no more styrofoam. I would support something like that, but again, let's not put people out of business to make us feel good. Yes, I agree, we should have much less styrofoam. And I think this gets back to the landfill issue. If we have less that goes in the landfill, we're gonna have less that we have to deal with. But let's match our actions with our resources. Thank you.
Yes, I am for banning styrofoam, or polystyrene, but I'm sure that we could have both sides come to a compromise. I'm sure we could have that. We could work out a solution. If I give you this, will you give me that? It has been done before, and I'm sure it can be done again. And like we say, we should be working together, not against each other, not for money, not for anything, but for our community's health and safety. Thank you.
I would have voted for the ban on styrofoam, polystyrene, whatever you want to call it. You're all familiar with the recycling numbers on the bottom of containers that are made out of plastic. Does anybody know what the number is for styrofoam?
Six.
Six, thank you. Somebody does know. Six is the most impossible to recycle. It's more toxic to recycle, number six, it should not actually have a recycling symbol on the bottom of it. Ones and twos, this is a one, twos are fairly easy to recycle, as is number fives, but styrofoam not so. And it is persistent in the environment, it breaks down, it goes down waterways, it eventually makes it into the ocean. And the fish and marine life eat it because they think it's food, and it kills them. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Pacific Garbage Patch? If you aren't, please go home, Google it, and look at what is out there. It is the size of a small continent circulating in the Pacific Ocean, and it is primarily plastic. So this is something we need to take care of for this day and for future generations. In terms of the cost, I had my students in environmental economics answer this question for a midterm question because the styrofoam ban was being discussed at the time. The overall cost of changing to a compostable form of takeout container was about less than two cents per container. So we're talking a total increase of maybe 10 cents for your lunch takeout, at most. This is passed on to the consumer, it's not absorbed by the business. So it is not going to put anybody out of business, it's going to increase business for the alternative materials, and that makes more jobs locally. So it was a win-win. I was very surprised when the council didn't go for this. And it's kind of similar to the plastic bag ban, it took us a while to get there too, but we've all adapted, haven't we? We all got our cloth bags in our car, and I'm even remembering to carry them in the store now, I used to forget. But it's just about changing behavior, like I spoke about before, and we can all do this. It's not a cost factor. We can ban styrofoam now. Thank you.
Would you repeat the question, please? San Francisco has just enacted the most stringent anti-styrofoam law in the nation. They banned not only food containers, but all sorts of styrofoam packaging as well. While our council has just refused to pass a much weaker and less comprehensive version. Do you support San Francisco's policy for our island, and if so, to what extent?
Okay, just clarification. San Francisco's ban, it is on food containers also. It cannot control insulation within our homes that is sold because that is an interstate violation. That's the consideration of why we had passed our bill that was being considered. Why would Walmart continue to be allowed to sell thousands or millions of polystyrene containers that contain the same material that our food providers will be punished That is not fair. I don't know how that is fair to anyone else, but to me, that is not fair on that vote. Now, what do we do? We come up with a resolution. How do we do? How do we come up with a resolution? Like the way we say it, with aloha, where we get everyone to work together. So what I have done is instituted a resolution that will provide for a task force that includes Mr. Yamana, who was the polystyrene producer, Wildlife Fund, Surf Rider Foundation, Department of Environmental Management, our research and development, myself, and Drew, I believe Drew Canoe is gonna be on it too, as well as other individuals or entities that are truly stakeholders on this issue. To me, you have to include the people that may be affected. In the last bill, they were never, they were never required, and that's why there was some opposition from the producers. We all want to move in an environmental direction, but in order to do so, we have to work together. Now, what does the resolution actually do? It provides for a kind of a scope. Now, Irene had brought up the labeling in America. In Germany, EU countries, a little bit different, they have a green dot system, and the packaging is graded on levels of performance, safety, recyclability, reusability, and the amount of resources it takes to make this problem. That is a much better system than we do, than we have here in America, because it's adopted by more nations than just America. America has our USDA, our EPA, systems within the federal government that monitor, thank you, environmental issues. In the German or the EU states, they put it more on, it started in the government level where they rated products, if you could carry the green dot, you were environmentally, thank you.
Should I answer again?
Sorry about that, I'm getting distracted here. Okay, our final question, before we put it out to the audience, and this one is not an environmental question. Ha, ha, ha. Okay, so, despite all the P-card outcry and press coverage, the council has not taken steps to amend the rules to clarify acceptable versus non-acceptable uses of the P-card. And there are other flaws as well in the rules, such as, who oversees the mayor? Will you propose amendments? What changes would you propose or support? For example, how would you define the phrase "for a public purpose"?
Having worked in the business world for over 25 years and having a company credit card, because I did a lot of travel, there was never any question about how you used it. It's not rocket science. There are some things that you should never use it for. There are some things that you should never use it for.
Sir, you must be an honorable man.
And, yes, I would, if the question is, would I support new regulations, absolutely, because it's a mess now. But if you look at, and I have a copy of the signature page that everyone who receives a P-card has to sign, it's very clear. I'm not sure what the confusion is. And if they're, I was going to talk about the Board of Ethics, but I'll leave that for another time. But that's an oversight committee. And if they're doing their job, they should be providing oversight on the P-card. Unless I have that wrong. So, number one, I'd like to see a different standard for the Board of Ethics. They don't believe the mayor should appoint everyone on the Board of Ethics. And then have the Board of Ethics rule on, or not rule, because they don't attend to meetings. Very, very hot topic for me. Because I abided by rules for years and years, and I don't ever remember. And if I did turn in an expense report, I was told immediately to fix it and to make up the difference. It's not difficult. Thank you.
Does a P-card mean please-me card? No. But I have had a P-card on my own credit card, company card, for nine years and have never used it, because I didn't see the need to use that card. I usually spend my own money to use whatever I need. And yes, ethics boards should be changed, I think rules should be changed, I think everything that's going on now should be amended. Right, Berna? So, that's my take on it, I don't want to say anymore on that.
Okay, P-cards can be abused, as we know, and, but that abuse of that P-card, as Michael Bernard just pointed out, should have been picked up immediately. And the person that should have picked that up would have been your managing director of the county. That's who's looking over the mayor's reports and what he's submitting as expenses.
Nancy Crawford.
Nancy Crawford, somebody brought up. Yeah, but that's not, yeah.
Wally Lau.
Wally Lau was the managing director, I'm sorry. Yeah. And, not the finance director. The managing director would be looking over the mayor's shoulders at their expense reports before they get submitted. So that, I don't know how that happened, but it went on for way too long, and it was most unfortunate for Mr. Canoe, absolutely. Now, as far as more oversight, the ethics board does need reshaping. This current council has made an attempt, and I hope that we can continue that attempt, because it is not working the way it is. And with only six members, and they're not always appointed, and so there's vacancies, you have a hard time getting quorum, et cetera, et cetera, and they're not representing all the various districts of the island. So that, we need to take that into consideration and change that so it is more effective. I think the last part of your question was, what constitutes spending for a public purpose? Well, if you don't personally gain from that, that's number one. Number two, it has to benefit the general public, as in paying for some type of public good that is open to all people to use. That's another way to define a public purpose. But to use it to please yourself with edibles or drinks, that's not a public purpose, folks. That's just consuming. So I think it's pretty clear, and I have used P-cards, I've had business P-cards before and been scrutinized for that. It is not rocket science, as Mr. Bernard pointed out earlier. So I'm not really sure how we got so far off the track. I know when I was at the county, all this was very, very closely supervised by our accountant in our Department of Environmental Management. So I'm not really sure how this went around. Thank you very much.
If I gather, the question was, how do we fix the problem with the P-card, or what would we suggest, and what is our definition of public purpose for terms of spending? Having a P-card, we do, I guess, we use it for our hotel stays over in Kona when we go and do county business. To me, that's a legitimate charge. Or if we have transportation costs for county business, it seems like a legitimate charge. I have corporate cards for my businesses. I have a P-card, I've never been questioned on a P-card. I think it's, to me, calamite, or excuse me, but I believe we all know what a public purpose can be argued in terms of purchases that are made in the name of the county, or when performing your duties and responsibilities as a public servant, clearly, or a business, or a owner of a business. Because when I look at the cards or my statements, I know what the purchases are. To change or improve on the system, the system is flawed in the beginning. Who has the ultimate say? Who is the top of the organizational chart? The mayor. Right? So don't you take the overview or oversight away from you, put it somewhere else. Let's do it, you guys can do it, and we can do it. But if you want change, you've got to change the system. Period. Make the change. Right? How? Okay. So, how would I change it? I would probably turn it over to either the finance director, where she can implement something, or, and submit it to the ethics for review, if she has questions regarding purchases, which is not uncommon. Why not? If they do come across something, why not bring it up for evaluation? And if need be, investigation and/or review. And hold the person accountable. If they've done something wrong, you establish discipline that would be, that would be equal to what was done, and we do it that way. That's how we address stuff to all of our public performance committees. Discipline. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. It's about accountability. And this current county, we have a charter that has guidelines, has sets guidelines to deal with situations like this. And within that charter, it requires that when violations come up, possible violations, that it is discussed, and there's an investigation, and at least a discussion, and possible reprimanding and accountability. This current county council did not enforce that charter. They voted against it. And that charter also has a clause that says every county employee shall be treated the same. In this situation, this certain employee was not treated the same. The mayor should have been treated like any other county employee that misappropriated, that didn't appropriately use taxpayer money. Okay, secondly, there was an ethics bill that came out of this that would strengthen our ethics board. We would have nine board members, instead of just five. Those nine members would be representative of each district on the island, instead of just all living in Hilo or Kona. It would require them to meet in Hilo and Kona, rather than just wherever they want, and they would have to meet at least three times in each location for a public meeting. I testified in favor of that bill. My opponent did not. If this would have happened on my watch, there would have been more accountability. I would have been a voice for the people. The people are very upset. Taxpayers are upset on what happened. I've talked to a lot of people, it's a big issue. People are losing faith in our government. We already have a voter participation crisis. When things like this happen, it works against the best interests of our government as a whole in bringing people together. We need to be able to hold people accountable, especially public servants. Changes that I would make, first of all, the purchases have to be directly related to the job. Things like, I don't need to mention it, you guys know, there's no way that those are directly related to the job duties. And they should not all be appointed by the person they're supposed to be watching over. And P-cards should just be public record. It's our taxpayer money, we should see how it's being spent. Or we don't need it, it could be like any other job, sir. Some jobs do have cards and some don't. Some of them, you get a receipt, you submit it for reimbursement, so that these sort of things don't have to happen, because it's too easy to just make it like it's your own credit card. Anyway, those are some ideas. Thank you very much.
Okay, now it's your turn. Many of you were given a lavender index card on which to write your questions, and if you haven't, raise your hand, and if you haven't received a card and you have a question, raise your hand and I'll pass them out. Oh, no, Robert has. You pass them out. Calamity, are delegated. So, those of you who have already written questions, please let me know and I'll come and collect your cards. Okay, I have some questions already, so we can start with those, while the rest of you are, who have questions, are filling out your cards.
Is it, are we following the same format?
Yes.
Okay, so who is?
Pass it back to Michael.
Maddie.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's Maddie.
Who started last time?
Whoever's turn it is.
It's Maddie's turn, it's her.
Okay. All my love, James.
This is a, this is like a two-part question, or maybe it's two questions, and I'm not sure how appropriate the first part is. The first part is, is your home zip code 96778? But we have candidates here who are representing, you know, both Council Four and Council Five. And Council Five has other zip codes, as does Council Four. They also have 96749, 96760, and 96771. So I'm not sure how appropriate that question is, but do you still want to ask that? Okay, so, the first question, part of your answer would be, to just say yes or no what your zip code is, and then the second part, I don't know. It's not my question, right? The second, the second part of it is, what are you going to do for Lower Puna, that's Punamaqai?
Yes, I'm 96778. District Four. What am I going to do for, what am I going to do for Lower Puna? There are so many things I want to do for Lower Puna. Water feasibility study, which we are about to do, for wastewater treatment system, which we need in order to keep jobs from here in our own Puna. Of course, we have the parks. Thanks to our councilman, Palaika, we have the parking lot, which you're going to need when the park opens up. Homeless, I've been involved with the homeless, I think Catherine Ford started it two years ago, and we've been working with her, and she's done a marvelous job with the homeless. And I take food to them once a month, packages of food for the homeless that live here in Pahoa. That's what I would do, part of it, yeah. There's so much more to do. We have roads, we have theft, we have drugs, and that's why I'm in Pahoa Wheat and Seed, I mean, Kokoah Wheat and Seed. Renee's going to slap me for that. Yeah. And it's just ongoing. When does it end? Where does it end? So you just have to dive in with a diving board, everything. Priorities first, of course. There are so much challenges here, and we just need to work on them one at a time and take priorities. To me, my priority is feeding the people, of course, and then getting jobs. Job is my second priority, to getting people to stay here, not go to Kona, not go to Huimea, not go to anywhere else, stay here with their families. Thank you.
I'm also in 96778, and I have been in 96778 for 35 years. So I haven't gone anywhere. I've been in Lower Puna, and I moved like, I think, one mile or something from my first house to my second house, but been in the same place the whole time. As for what we can do for Puna, Maddie named a lot of the problems that we are confronted with here in Puna. Roads remain a concern in Lower Puna, and getting a Punamaqai alternative route is absolutely critical. As president of Hawaiian Shores, after Hurricane Isel, we were devastated, along with Nanavali, where Maddie lives, and less so in Leilani and HPP, but those two subdivisions, Hawaiian Shores Beaches and Nanavali, were absolutely devastated after the storm. And our whole main corridor was impassable. And we worked very closely with, thank God for Helco, I know that was, they really responded appropriately, and civil defense, and set up the command center at our community center. And fortunately, our community recovered faster than the other, than you, because then they moved down the road to Nanavali. But anyways, it was a wonderful experience of seeing community work together. I was just so impressed. And that is the kind of energy we need to carry forward to tackle the problems that we're seeing in Lower Puna. The meth epidemic has escalated once again. Yes, we had the Wheat and Seed program in the late 2000s, and we were making progress. We had gotten money from the state legislature, that money dried up, we had the Great Recession, there's been nothing directed, not nothing, but there's been very little resources directed at the meth problem. It has escalated into a crisis yet once again. And that brings on a lot of other problems, from domestic violence to break-ins and all kinds of crime on the street. We're not equipped to deal with that crime, so we need better police services. That's one of my main focuses, roads, police services. And we're getting some help from our state senator. He is working on, say, a new learning center for down here. He is, does have on his capital improvement list, a substation, wastewater substation, which Maddie referred to earlier. It is the county's obligation to do the feasibility study. They passed the money, and it went on hold because of the threat of lava inundation. We need to get these things happening, so that we have economic opportunities, higher education opportunities, and build our economy. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So the question was regarding what? Zip code, I am, and what I would do for Puna.
No. What are you going to do for Lower Puna?
Okay, so I have lived residence in 96760 since 1991, when I moved back with my beautiful wife, Jermaine, and took my first home in Hawaiian Acres, where I haven't moved far from. In fact, I live just across the street from my first home. What am I gonna do for Lower Puna? Too bad. You know, I put that on my advertisement. What has he done for me lately? Well, let me explain what I would do. And this is all available on our website, or information if you want. The Punta Connectivity money can be used for Lower Puna, but we've also, for Lower Puna, we have allocated money to Punta Community Medical Center in the past. And I would continue to support Punta Community Medical Center, but also support an acute care facility. I don't believe the state, HHS-C, Hawaii Health Care Systems Corporation, is doing any good job administering our public hospitals, as we can see in Maui, that they've laid off people and they're having problems there. And Hilo is now far behind. Now, that's at state level. I don't have jurisdiction at the state level. That depends on the state, our senate and our representatives. They gotta tackle that issue, and they haven't done so. What we can do here is support our community medical centers. Bailey Clinic, Renee sits on the board also, of Punta Community Medical Center. They receive the prenatal equipment that we have allocated, community relief funding for. That's important things that we need for our people here, prenatal care, and also healthcare. I can see where there's, hopefully, a development of other medical services within there, so we don't have a job to do here. In terms of access, I don't think there's anybody better up here qualified to make roads happen than this gentleman right here. I know about roads. I know how to operate machinery. I have friends that work. I've built my own homes. I've built projects. I can make things happen in terms of construction. But if you want what I can do for Lower Puna, I can show you. Thank you.
So I view Puna as all-one district. Basically, we're all connected. I've lived up in Mountain View 27 years, my entire life, and I spend a lot of time down in Lower Puna. I have a lot of friends down, and this district does represent Lower Puna. We represent Kalapana. And everything that we do, and everything that the District Four representatives do, I will view as also doing for my district, Puna. We're lucky, we get two representatives, basically. So I will support what the District Four representative decides to take leadership on as representatives of Lower Puna, that includes homelessness, roads, emergency services, because it's all connected. We only have, what, seven police officers at one given time for all of Lower Puna and Upper Puna. So this is what I mean, is we're all one district. And I would also support, we're talking about Lower Puna, we need an alternate route of access. We need a Makai route. And that's how I also support Lower Puna. Thank you.
I guess this is a personal issue for me, having run a substance abuse clinic for three years. It was a while ago, but believe me, the issues are the same. And I see a recurring pattern happening here, because the issues are not being addressed head-on. It's not gonna go away. These things get worse before they get better. So I would definitely focus on that. But getting back to my initial opening statement, I think this is about infrastructure. We have a good start on mass transit now. At least we have a bus that can take students or take employees out of Puna. I wish we could stay in Puna, but if we can't, at least we have mass transit. And I would also support expanding police in the subdivisions and in Lower Puna, not in the office. And I have nothing but regard for the police department. They attend our meetings at the Neighborhood Watch on a monthly basis. I've had to call them a couple of times with squatters, and I have nothing but praise for our police department. They deserve a lot of credit. It's a tough, tough job, but we need more of them. I guess those are my priorities. Thank you.
Okay, we do have, you know, a couple of places where people ask a whole bunch of questions on their card. No fair, folks, you know? And we also have a couple of places where several people asked about the same general topic, in which case I will sort of consolidate their questions into one question on that topic. So geothermal, your position, please.
Geothermal is considered a good resource for renewable energy. It has a terrible track record in Lower Puna. And part of that has to do with a lack of foresight in where it was located, and also the type of technology that is currently in use. It's a little bit antiquated already. These are technologies that change rapidly. And the problems with having geothermal in Lower Puna became quite apparent when we were faced with possible lava inundation of Pohoe Town, and we are still faced with possible lava inundation, folks. This lava flow has not ended, and we live on an active volcano. So just imagine, if the geothermal plant were in the path of an active lava flow, what would happen? It's quite terrifying to consider. As it was, we had an emergency release during Hurricane Isel in 2014 that was not notified. The public were not notified. And this causes environmental and human health issues, and it has continued to perpetrate concerns about human and environmental health. We don't have adequate off-site monitoring for underground water. This is fact. And so there's things that need to change. The county has a relocation fund. They exercised it for homes and households that wanted to move out of the area within a mile of the plant. And then in some cases, they resold that property back onto the market. This defeated the purpose of creating a buffer zone, which should have been done initially, and one mile is perhaps not adequate for the type of resource that we happen to have here on this island. Resources are different worldwide. I've visited Iceland. I've visited geothermal in New Zealand. The resources have different components, different chemicals in them, and we have a particularly toxic one. So we need to not produce any, I mean, we need to not increase geothermal production in Lower Puna. We don't need the energy here. We have alternative forms of energy that we could be using, particularly solar. This area gets a lot more solar than, say, the Hilo area. So there's other alternative energies that we should be exercising at this point in time, not expanding our geothermal production for use on the other side of the island, for use potentially on the other islands if they pursue an undersea cable. Puna does not have to be the production area for energy for the state of Hawaii. Thank you.
Armad that operates the Punta geothermal plant here, right next to Nanavali and Leilani Some questions as to the monitoring systems. They supposedly fixed the monitoring system, so when there is a release, like we had during Isel, there would be better response in the sulfide release. Thank you. Is it renewable energy? Yes, it is. It takes the heat from the earth and provides electricity. Now, it also injects what could be questionable products back into the earth. And part of that process, there's an open pond that does have material or solution with the penitent, that people find not too environmentally friendly. It has been producing 25 megawatts steadily for our company. The question remains, is it environmentally feasible to continue doing that and producing that energy that is a stable energy for our grid, existing grid? The question also may be, do we wanna go with a cooperative? Kauai, who has done so, to me, has set them up to be much more flexible and consider a renewable or cleaner energy system. Do we wanna support that? We've really gotta consider that. Helco is, they're gonna release their commission, Public Utilities Commission, is gonna come out very shortly with their decision on the next era acquisition of Helco and HECO. So we've really gotta get involved in, there was an opportunity, and there still is an opportunity for our community to decide, do we wanna go that cooperative route or remain held into a corporate entity? So it's about getting involved again, working together. You know, people like to blame other people for problems in the environment. We are responsible, because we all polluted somewhere or another. You might not think so, but we do. We do. We have cesspools. It's not very environmentally friendly when considered nowadays, right? So we're moving with the times. I think we all want to move in a direction where we're doing renewable energy, and so there's so much opportunity, because I just spoke with SolarCity representatives today regarding a plant project, and you know, it's so unfortunate that they got turned down with one of the biggest projects in Oahu. And their project in Kauai is going ahead, because Kauai is a cooperative. And we could have done that. Thank you.
All right, I have to answer the question. Geothermal operations can, they produce hydrogen sulfide, which is a toxic gas, not just a noxious gas, I mean, a noxious gas, it's a toxic gas. And it produces these liquid brines that need to be carefully controlled and disposed of. As Eileen was saying, the history of geothermal in our district has not proven itself to be very, they have not proven themselves to be good neighbors. They produce an unacceptable level of light and noise and air pollution. There have been a couple of blowouts that have yet to be really addressed by our government. Right now, they're just being ignored by state and county levels. And there's also some talk of fracking to increase the porosity of the lava, and that could cause some serious water contamination. And it's dangerous. So it's proven to be a highly industrialized activity. And we have a lot of other options. Solar, we can produce for five to 10 cents a kilowatt. Geothermal is 10 to 20 cents a kilowatt. And we have an opportunity in Hawaii to produce 100% of our own energy here, using environmentally safe standards. We can use, we can have smaller energy grids, co-ops, using solar, large-scale solar, like how they've been doing all over the world. We have hydroelectric we could use. Parker Ranch has a really good plan that could possibly produce all of the electricity for our island. We don't really need to use geothermal. And what we can do now is the county needs to preserve our right to regulate geothermal here, because we're facing this, a state is trying to take away our ability to regulate it, as if Oahu knows better than we do what's going on here and what our community needs. So that's my stance on geothermal. Thank you.
I suppose in 1993, the Punta geothermal sounded like a good idea, it was a good revenue stream, but I think that took precedence over good judgment. And when Armad acquired it in 2004, I believe, and they still believe, that they're exempt from nighttime noise, and so does the planning department. And on February 4th of 2015, the county council in a majority vote also agreed. This is, to me, a class action suit waiting to happen. It's been mentioned before, the county bought houses, people told them that they made them sick. It was a sick house. And the county resold that sick house. Does someone have an explanation for that? Yes, money, but it doesn't make any sense. I would agree, we have plenty of sun down here, let's focus on that. Just that, this is related. As an example, the state legislature in 2013 devised this green energy market securities, I think an investment banker came up with that term, $150 million was raised in a bond sale. The goal was to lend all of that money for solar and green energy projects. $21.5 million was spent on overhead. The director of that state-run department earns $138,000 a year. Anyone wanna take a guess at how many installations that $21.5 million was provided? 12. That alone, that money alone, could have provided 1,075 homes with solar energy, approximately 20,000 a home. At approximately 20,000 a home. So the state is spending money on these ridiculous projects. And we're wanting here. And we're ready. So, yes, this is probably not a county council issue, but I think the county council could influence the state, our legislatures at the state department. This should never have happened. And it's going to continue because that department is still in operation. And they're going to try to devise another alternative for spending the money. Yeah, I laughed at that, too. So we can do it, but we can't do it when money like this is just being squandered. Thank you. Geothermal. I'm not for geothermal or against geothermal. My greatest concern is the health issue. The monitoring system that they have, that they said that they have on the ground and in the air. And it's in residents in Leilani. I think residents in Leilani has a monitoring system. They have monitors. No, I mean in the homes. Or personal, personal monitoring systems. Well, anyway. And then I look at solar because that's another alternative for energy. But I'm thinking about the future. When those panels are no longer, or needed, or can be used, where does those panels go? Where do the batteries go? How do we do, how do we take care of doing away with the panels in the future years? We don't have anything right now, no, to do away with it. So, yeah, when you dismantle it, where do you put it? Where do you take it to dispose of it? We haven't thought about that right now. Nobody's thought about that. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You know, we're starting to run down on our time. We have to be out of here by 8:00, by the way, folks. So I have a lot of questions and I probably won't get to everybody and color my, you know. So some of these things were already touched on. So I'm going to skip around and go for, and ask questions on issues that were not raised at all, okay? So that we have a little broader spectrum of what we're discussing here. This one is, has to do with rapid oea death, Cerato Sisters. How do you immediately, excuse me. How do you plan to immediately maximize the research needed to stop rapid oea death instead of waiting until most of the trees are dead?
How do we maximize the research being done before all the trees are dead? You know, I really don't like rapid oea death. To me, that's not a good connotation. I don't think Hawaiians would use that. We live with that tree. We've probably brought that tree here because it's seen within Arkapalaba, Maualin, Zauso, and Tahiti. Where the origins of the tree came, that's okay. But, you know, I'm going to answer the question, okay? That's okay. To maximize the research done, okay, we have Sitar, who's currently doing it, GBA, PJ Friday. And we have also the Hawaiian from USDA who's currently doing studies for the Cerato Sisters from Brea. Now, we've taken an alternative step and invited Charam, the Korean IMO, to submit testing of his. But he believes a solution for rapid oea death. And I'm also going to embrace GMO. I'm going to embrace anything that can save our forests in terms of research and what will work. I don't strike anybody out. Because to me, if you want to solve this problem, we have to all work together. And in maximizing the research, you have to work together to get the funding to get this done. I think we've got the attention of the state. We certainly got the attention of the county because we've done a lot in instituting the brochures, the information, and getting the, and that's the important thing. Getting the information out on how we contain and keep it from spreading to areas of the island that have not been affected yet. It started here, right by Nanavali, right? Some suspect it's the mulch. I wouldn't disagree. There's no proof that it wasn't the mulch. Because so much oea was used in there with other materials and everybody was using it around here. So if we do find out it was from that, it could have been the county. How is that? Trying to be environmentally friendly. How is about that? We got to really think sometimes. We do things with the best intentions, but they have sometimes effects that are contrary to what we had hoped for. That's okay. We all make mistakes. But we got to work on the increasing funding for our education. So I am certainly going to help JP and the state and the USDA and any other persons. And there was a screen also tries to help with giving out valuable data and provide. Everybody wants to attack this issue and try to resolve the problem. Please, if you do have oea that's affected, bring it down, cover it up so it doesn't spread. Do not transport it on the island because that is helping spread it. Thank you very much.
Rapid oea death is one of those, another one of those issues that people bring up a lot because it is, it's so heartbreaking and it's detrimental to almost our identity as people who live here and grew up among those trees and that forest. Regarding solutions, like Danny said, there is, there are solutions that are reporting to have worked in the Korean natural farming community. I took a sustainable ag class like five years ago and we studied Korean natural farming. And we did tests using indigenous microorganisms. And it's a solution that you spray on the tree or in the soil using your indigenous microorganisms in your area. And it worked. And they're reporting results. If you Google Korean natural farming, you can get the solution. It's really easy and cheap to make. And they're reporting that it's working. I've been talking to a lot of people about it. Some people have noticed that the oea trees that are in an environment that is more native, which means there's aluhe around the oea, they are showing more resistance than those who, than the oas that have been cleared around because it's not their indigenous climate. And they're very sensitive trees, as we know. So I will support all efforts. And really where the solution lies is going out into the community and talking to residents and finding solutions because there are solutions out there. And I've been going door to door. I've been phone banking, talking with a lot of people. And I'm compiling a list of what's important to who. And if I'm elected, I will create these task force of people in the community who are passionate about addressing these issues. And rapid oea death is a big one. Thank you.
Albezia trees, koki frogs, rat lung, coffee boar, fire ants, dengue, rapid oea. You could have asked about any one of those. They're all important. I guess I have a question. Why, when someone hears a koki frog on Oahu, they send, no lie, the koki frog patrol to find them? And I believe they do it on Maui also. This is something that we cannot solve alone. We need the help of the state and the federal government to get resources to address this. And I would hope that it would not be limited to rapid oea death. All of those things are very important to, especially this area of Puna. We have them all. And I think there are resources available. There's certainly research at the university being done. I'm not going to talk to it because I don't have the specifics. But there is information available. But it's got to be on a shared, a shared basis. But again, I would look to the state legislature for this. If they can appropriate $150 million to a failed company for no solar, they can appropriate some money for us to address our issues. Thank you. Rapid oea death. I think what we, we need to do is educate our people. We need more education out there about rapid oea death. And I'm pretty sure that we have grants out there. We have the BIS patrol out there for albezia. We should have something for rapid death or oea. I don't know why we can't have that. Just form a task force, that's all. Start an organization. Oh, they do have one. In fact, I, he was at Danny's talk story and told us all about how not to bring the disease out of the forest. Clean your shoes with alcohol, your equipment with alcohol, your truck, underneath your truck, your tires and everything so you don't spread it around. So I think we should have a task force for that, like we have the BIS. Thank you.
Yeah, two minutes. I'm going to take her two minutes, she said. This is such a serious issue. And I thank you, Michael, for rattling off all the serious issues that have come to the island since I've been here. I was lobbying in 97 in the halls of the state Capitol about koki frog on the, on the Big Island. Got laughed at, told to give them cups of coffee. I'm serious. It was bad. But now you on Oahu and you on Maui have squads of people to go out and tackle the koki every time you hear one. I tried doing that. It's darn hard. And now we have koki all over the island. That was the beginning. I was also, as a recycling coordinator, gifted this 60-foot pile of green waste because the contractor had defaulted on his contract and I had to take care of it. We were out of permit. We were in violation from the Department of Health permit. And all we could do was shred it. People would come and pick up that mulch. And that allowed the spread of fire ants, stinging caterpillar, and everything else because it wasn't being properly composted. Before I left the county in 2006, I uncovered documents that had not seen the light of day. The permit for the West Hawaii landfill, Puana Bulu, requires 40 acres upfront in resource recovery. That's recycling, folks. I got the county council to fund prepping 10 acres of that for a compost facility. Because until you compost this stuff, you're not going to kill off all of these nasties, all the pests and diseases. And 10 years later, still not happening. I think it just maybe, no, not happened. Okay. Coming along. It's coming along. Okay, but this is 10 years, folks. And we've been spreading stuff all over this island. It's pathetic. What can we do in terms of getting research dollars? We have every organization here on the Big Island. We have the College of Ag at UH Hilo. We have Sitar's Cooperative Extension. We have Pacific Basin Agricultural Research Center, PIBAR. We have the US Department of Forestry. That's not the Forestry Service, folks. That's where they do the research, like Dr. Flint Hughes. So what they don't have is funding. And this has been attacking us in the Okole for all of these issues. We don't have the funding to do the research that we need to find solutions for, say, the rapid oea death. And until we find solutions, we have to educate, as Ms. Green said, on reducing the spread of this disease. This is a tragic disease. We could lose the land cover that we are familiar with in the next 20 years. Understory, everything else that goes with it, the animal life that goes with it, the birds. This is serious and we need to stem its spread immediately. Thank you.
Okay. 25 minutes more. This, this question is worded sort of strangely. As a grammar teacher, I would make a lot of remarks all over it. But I want to read it anyway. What will you commit to doing toward Puna? Making the healthy land, healthy food, healthy people connection a reality?
Do you understand that question?
How to make Puna better?
What will you commit to doing toward, which could be translated as how we do, make Puna the healthy land, healthy food, healthy people reality?
Okay, thank you. We have the potential to produce 300% of our food supply in Hawaii. There's much more that the county and state could be doing to support farmers. We need to support our local farmers. And that's the bottom line. And we need to support the farmers that are preserving healthy soil and not just degrading healthy soil. There's a lot of really good models out there that we could follow. We have a lot of ag land and we have a lot of people looking for land to farm on. So we need to be supporting initiatives to either make it easier for farmers to get land. It's already tax deductible. And we need to support the local market better, too. We could have farmers markets in every community association center if we wanted. We just need healthier community associations. We need more support for community associations, capacity building, more resources for them so that they can operate in a healthy way and be really, be real representatives for their residents. And that includes farmers markets, community gardens, public commercial kitchens. We need more public commercial kitchens. And we just need to be tackling our ag situations a lot more and taking it more seriously. Thank you.
I drive by the farmers market on a regular basis and it's empty six days a week and then one day a week, there's a farmers market. And I know there are plans. There's a pretty drawing rendition of what's been proposed there. But it's been up there so long, it's fading. I think we can do a lot more, especially here with the rich history of agriculture in Puna. And I think partnerships with the schools. I know we don't have authority to go into schools. It's the state department that runs, runs the school department. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't have partnerships with the county and the schools to have teaching gardens. Unless you start this kind of... Unless you start this concept of healthy eating, healthy growing at an early age, it's really difficult. Because kids love twinkies. But you can't grow twinkies. It has to start. So I've been talking about this concept of teaching gardens ever since I started on this campaign. And why not have a partnership with the schools to focus on that? I've heard this phrase before. I'd like to see the food that's produced for and by the people of Puna. Thank you.
Yes, we do have a lot of land. The weather first. They're far. They have vegetables that they, in fact, they just donated meat for our homelessness. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I wasn't there. Thank you so much. Bless you. But we should learn how to teach our people to grow their own on their own property. We do. My husband and I, we have small little farms, you know, but just the lettuce and the regular things that, you know, you can grow so easily. Cucumbers, not good for us. They don't last. But tomatoes and string beans, corn. I think we should teach our people how to grow their own, you know, educate them on how. A lot of our people, especially in the Hawaiian Paradise Park, they have large properties that they can use. We have, the church has a public garden that, you know, could be a uterine stool. But we need to teach our people so that our children can have nutritious food to eat when they go. That's all. Teach our children, they'll teach us, too. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the Puna Keiki. It's the old folks in our society at this point that remember how to grow things. And they need to pass those skills on to the younger. And as Maddie pointed out, not every subdivision has large lots where you can grow your own food. I live in a small lot subdivision, 10,000 square feet. I do have a kitchen garden, but it's in flower boxes off of my deck. And I raise all of my greens and my lettuce, I mean, my tomatoes and other things like that. But we could have more community gardens and transfer that information from the older generation to the younger generation. One thing that's holding it back right now is the little red fire ant. I experienced at Haas where the kids have lost interest in gardening because when they go out and garden, they get bit. So we have to first tackle these escaped exotics. And in this case, the red fire ants and insect. They're very nasty. But there's lots of good approaches to doing that. And we are starting to get more and more people involved in eradicating little red fire ant. We've also gotten some help from, again, our state senator has worked on a bill which is local foods into the schools. And this is a program that the county can pony up on and help. And this is, again, teaching the keiki how to sustain themselves, how to grow food that's good for them, that's healthy for them, that isn't a twinkie. We bring in, still, we bring in somewhere between 70% and 90% of our food resources into the state of Hawaii. But we could be growing them here. Not just feel-good crops like pineapples and papayas and sugar, but food that sustains us. The weather foods are here. They grow beef. I'm sorry I missed the burgers, but I heard they were really good.
They were.
Oh, right, they were. But, you know, we can do this here and in Puna, which doesn't have the best soils in the state. But there's a lot that can be grown here. There's a lot of orchard that can be grown here, and there's a lot of native foods that already are growing here. We could have food corridors, and we have somebody working on that, on the Red Road. So these are, and the problem is something that's going to require a change in county code in order to make that work. Those are things that we can do at the council level. And I would like to see our community more healthy. And on the other side of dietary health, we also need better medical services. PCMC, the Puna Community Medical Center, great effort, needs to go forward. We need that feasibility study on the wastewater plant because we can't have medical services without the wastewater facility. Guys, we can make this happen, working with the state. And I really look forward to doing that. Thank you very much.
Okay, how can we promote a, sorry, "Healthy Land, Food, and People"? All right. So, yeah, we could have a healthy land. We adopted a system. If we adopted a system that was more like the really sustainable society which lived here prior to now, where they got everything here. They grew everything here. They eat everything from here. That's the way I would go. I eat from the ocean. I grow my taro leaves so I can make my laulau. I grow, I raise my own pigs. I raise my own cows. So if you want to talk about agriculture, it takes money. Because I remember how much money I had to buy Solay to get fertilizer or to raise the animals, just to buy a container for water for your animals. And if they get sick, you got to treat them. Now, what does that take? Takes money. How do you get that? Property taxes, which we, where we get most of our income. But we got to pay our property taxes. And we need to, you know, and talking about our homeowners associations, we have to really be good citizens and participate and pay our fair share of association dues and fees if we want improvements to our roads. Correct? Yes. I. So if you want to provide money, services, we all have to pull together and work together to do this. And be responsible and fulfill our obligations to our community, which is contributing and helping. Because nothing's free nowadays, unfortunately. That's the truth of life.
We're running up against the clock here, and we don't have time for any more questions. Because I do want to give everyone a chance to do closing remarks. We don't have time for three minutes for your closing remarks. I'm sorry. We have to cut it down to two minutes each. So hopefully, you will have a chance, people will have a chance to talk to you personally. Hopefully, people will look at your websites and read your brochures. I do want to mention that the candidates have put their brochures out on the table in the back. Before you leave, please make sure that you check them out and have a look and take some home so you know you can read at your leisure. Check out people's websites. And you can contact all of the candidates. They make themselves very available because they do want you to contact them. They want to be able to talk to you and hear your concerns and that you know how they plan to address those concerns. So right now, we're going to do a quickie run-through on the final statements here. And who's up next to do, let's see. Danny was the last person to speak. So that means that Jen will do the first final statement. Thank you. And there was one thing I did want to make an announcement, a couple of announcements before we do that. Please help everybody when we're pow and help put the chairs up against the walls. And I also want to thank Senator Rudeman for lending us the sound system for all four forums. I asked him because I know he plays music and he has sound systems. So he couldn't say no to me. But I did promise that I would let you know that he did contribute that. And so that's what we're talking about, everybody working together. That's what it's all about. And so we're all working together here to find solutions. Hopefully, some of the solutions that some candidates made will impress the other candidates, and they'll incorporate those ideas in their own campaigns. And that's what sharing ideas is all about, too. So that we can, that's what, like, these are little brainstorming sessions also, you know. So let's start with Jen and hear her final remarks, and then everybody else's, and then we can do a little smoothing and interfacing while we put the chairs away. And thank you so much for everything, all of you.
All right. So I'm running because, as we all know, our district is so underserved and underrepresented. And I have experience with working with people. We need to work together. I have a long track record of working with diverse community groups to make things happen, to pass bills at the state and county levels, preserving beach access, getting big money out of government, and protecting children from agrochemical sprays over on Kauai. We worked with surfers, farmers, Hawaiian cultural groups, teachers, nurses. We brought everyone together. We organized the largest march in Kauai history. 4,000 people came out, and we got our county government to actually represent the voice of the people, to put the big business interests aside. Because we had to force them to do that. And that's what this campaign is about. I've been going door to door. I've talked over thousands of people. I've handed out my personal cellphone number to over 2,000 people. I have a wish list of Puna's needs, who's interested in what, what issues need to be addressed, how they'll be addressed. And I'm ready to tackle our issues. I'm ready to fight for Puna and start to get us our needs here. I'm not status quo. And this isn't going to be status quo if I'm elected. It's time that we take our situation seriously. We need better roads. We need to deal with our crime situation, with our land. We need to support our community associations. There's so many issues that we're facing. And we need somebody that actually represents the interests of the people. Look at the campaign contributions. That's where you'll see the difference. Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for your input and your questions. It's been extremely helpful for me because I want to make sure that I represent the people of the district. I have not sought, nor have I accepted, any endorsements. And I've not sought a dollar from anyone but myself. My campaign is completely self-funded because I want to represent you. I don't want to have any outside influence, having to look over my shoulder to see how I would respond. So I would like you to keep that in mind. And in closing, I'd like you to consider matching skills and experience to the role of the county council. If elected, I'll work full-time using my 25 years of business experience, including budget management, 12 years of teaching, and 40 years of volunteer activity. And if anyone is concerned about my stamina, I come from hardy Native American stock, and I'm up for the job. Thank you.
I will continue working very hard with and for you, solving the many problems facing our community and taking advantage of the many opportunities available to us. It requires imagination and teamwork. Over the past 20 years, I've shown that I can work well with others and get much done. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to use the information, good relationships, and teamwork skills I've gained from my experience as a businessperson and volunteer in our community as your representative on County Council. I humbly ask for your vote for Hawaii County Council person District 4. Mahalo, blessings, and hugs.
All right. Again, I'd like to thank Renee and the folks at Malama Opuna for hosting this event, as well as everyone here for attending. I know this is a weekday evening, and you're taking time out of your schedule to come here and take an interest in the leadership for District 4 and District 5. I'm not the establishment candidate in this race, although I have gotten some endorsements. I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club. I've been endorsed by the Puna Pona Alliance. And I've been endorsed by the Hawaii Government Employees Association, which is the largest union in the state. And I respect what they do, and I respect the help that they are giving to candidates. People often ask what my agenda is, and my response is that my agenda is you, the constituents in my district. My goal is to represent my constituents and not press forward a personal agenda or be a puppet for large business interests. If I had to describe one thing about myself, it would be that I get things done. The only reason to identify a problem is to find a solution, one that is equitable and cost-effective. With my background in agricultural science and training as an economist, my professional career has been about teaching and applying decision-making skills and critical thinking. I'm not interested in being a career politician. I've already had a career. But I can commit to more than just a two-year term if elected, because it takes more than that to pass legislation. I'm running a grassroots campaign. 90% of my contributions from local residents. And I want to humbly ask for your support in the primary election on Saturday, August 13. Mahalo.
Thank you again, everyone, for coming and for staying and listening to us. It's all going to come down to August 13. So please go out and vote and register who you would like to be District 4 and District 5 and the county council. Now, if you're not aware of what accomplishments I made in the 14 months that I've been in office, please go and pick up one in the back. It's just a little bit of what I would like to say I've been able to accomplish with much, much help from the community. And for my appointee, my appoint to say, underserved community, I would have to make the difference because I have great relationship with all the community associations. They trust me, they respect me, and they know my door is always open and can always come and see me. Even when there is hakaka or dissension within a community, you have to be open to both sides. And that's very hard to do. Because although you might feel a certain way, you have to be representative of all individuals within that homeowners association and be, try to remain neutral and listen to what they want. But in getting those things done, I think I've done a fantastic job in getting things done for my community. And I want to continue to do that. One correction on the 4,000 people march in Kauai. I believe there's been bigger-hoing marches than that. Thank you very much. So I think that's need to be corrected.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Do I get a chance to respond to that? Do I get a chance to respond to that? I'm ready.
You had your final remarks. Final means final, yeah. I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank all the candidates. I think, you know, it's really nice for a change to have, instead of a whole bunch of candidates that you hate and don't really feel like going to the polls to vote for any of them. and don't really feel like going to the polls to vote for any of them, wishing that you could vote no to everybody. You know, it's finally a relief to know that, even though I don't necessarily agree with everything that everybody up here said on every issue, you know, I think more often than not, you know, we're all coming from the same place. We all agree what the problems are. We may not all agree on the best way to resolve them or the timeline for it. But I think in a lot of ways... Because we're all living here together, you know? And we all see the problems with the roads. We all see the problems with access to health care. We all see all of that stuff. So I want to thank all of you. And I feel certain that no matter who gets elected, I think that Puna will be in good shape, at least as far as its two representatives are concerned on the county council. Thank you very much. Please remember to help put the chairs away and all that good stuff. Thank you.